Evening and welcome to the Falls Township Supervisors Meeting for Monday, January 18. At this time, I'd like to start with a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Galloway.
Yeah.
Mr. Boraski.
Here.
Mr. Dentz is not here today. Let the record show, he had a work, emergency work engagement. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Prior to our meeting tonight, the township did hold an executive session. Mr. Clark, could you provide a summary?
Yes, Mr. Boraski. Prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss several matters involving personnel.
Thank you. And before we take item number one, agenda, we do have Mr. Andrews here from the Parks and Recreation Department for a presentation of awards for the Fall Photo and the Holiday House Decorating Contest winners. Mr. Andrews?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Boraski, and Happy New Year to everyone. Typically, we do this in person. We do some photo ops for our, for our awards for these big contests from 2020. Hold on just a second. Let me get on video here. There we go. Sorry about that. We're going to start with the Holiday House Decorating Contest. We chose two winners in this contest, a second place winner and a first place winner. Second place winner is Charles Klimas from 438 Lakeside Drive. I think Charles is with us tonight. Great job. And Ryan and Joanne McGeadigan were our first place winners from 234 Walton Road. Each participant will receive a $25 Visa gift card and a certificate, a frame certificate to be dropped off. We really appreciate them participating. We have some great houses to choose from, as always. One of our fun, most fun events of the year, and I'd like to congratulate those, those individuals tonight. I believe they're here. I don't know if they want to bring them in or not. Thank them.
Yeah, they're in, Mr. Andrews. We see them.
Okay. Charles and Ryan, thank you so much for your hard work. They were great, great houses.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the Fall Photo Contest. We had winners in five different categories. A lot of great pictures to choose from. We posted those pictures on Facebook earlier today, the winners from each contest. Hard to choose. In the Wildlife category is Bernadette Drunkenmiller. She had a great egress swimming over the lake. I don't know if Bernadette can make the meeting tonight. She said she couldn't make it, but I did want to recognize her achievement. In Architecture category, Angie of Fall. She took a picture of the Stagecoach Tavern up in Fallsington. It's a great picture. I think Angie's here tonight. And the Plants and Flora category was Pamela Kennedy. It's a multi-colored leaf down at the Falls Township Park. Pamela couldn't make it tonight. Pamela's been in our contest several years and has won before. She does a great job. In the other category, which is the miscellaneous category, Judy Cagiano. It's a picture of the intersection of Ox Valley Road and New Falls. It was right after a rainstorm. Sun was coming out. Definitely go on Facebook, check it out. Great picture. And the last category and the last winner is Dawn Denner. That was our landscape category. And that was an oversight of the lake at the park with sunset. They all did a fabulous job. I believe Angie's here tonight, possibly Judy. And they might be the only two that did make it. I'd like to congratulate everyone and everyone who participated. It was a great contest. We look forward to it. It's tough every year to pick the best photos. The winners will get a $25 gift card to our sponsor, Alan's Camera. And in a frame certificate of the photo they submitted, along with the framed photo that we will hang in the township building that we've done in the past. And they will also receive a $25, they'll receive a $25 gift card and also a frame certificate from the Board of Supervisors. So I really like to thank everyone who participated, and I can't, I can't wait till next year. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate, Township definitely appreciates the support and the interaction, and it's, it's really great. The photos are amazing. And, and the holiday decorating this year, I think, I think some residents would, you know, were just kind of sick and tired of being stuck inside. And I think I saw, definitely saw more houses and had texts from friends that were decorating and saw more houses. So, Mr. Andrews, you know, I appreciate you having these two contests.
I'd like to thank the park and thank you, and I'd like to thank the Park and Recreation Board. They're the ones that judge the contests, look through everything, and they did a great job, you know, picking the winners and getting out there and see everything. So I'd like to thank them too. But thank you for your support on it also.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to item number one, public comment. Kyle, do we have anybody in the waiting room?
Hold on one second. We have one person in the waiting room. We'll see if they have any questions. She's not raised her hand, so we're going to move on.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have, Dave, you're running the meeting for us, right? I'm sorry.
It's okay. No problem.
Okay. All right. That will move on to number two then. Number, item number two is consider adopting ordinance amending housing standards, Chapter 138. I'd like to start with Ms. Gallagher, if we can, and then we'll move on to Mr. Tequita to summarize the change here.
Certainly. This is a rather extensive change to the Township's Housing and Building Standards Ordinance. There are two main components to this ordinance, the first being it is eliminating the current inspection process that happens when there's a residential transfer of property. And it would replace that with certifications of the major safety systems in any residence that is being transferred. And it's also implementing a rental unit inspection program. We've reviewed this with several of the owners of the apartment complexes in, within the township to discuss their concerns. We've also reviewed it with some individuals from the Realtors Association. There are some changes that we would suggest be made that were circulated in the board's packets on Friday. And I'll just run through them real quick. They are changes that have had, have occurred since the ordinance was advertised. But they do not amount to something that requires re-advertising. So it changes the name of Residential Rental License Permit Program to simply Residential Rental License Program throughout the entire ordinance. Changes the phrase rental properties to residential rental properties throughout the entire ordinance. In Section 138.7C7, it added language to state that a certificate of occupancy is issued only after a residential rental property inspection is completed due to a change in tenancy. In Section 138.4, inspections of common areas of residential dwellings was updated to include that it's not only indoor common areas, but also outdoor common areas such as parking lots, sidewalks, athletic fields, common green spaces, et cetera. In Section 138.7B6, it was updated to state that a residential rental property license can be transferred to another property owner with the approval of the township. And in Section 138.7, the definition section, it differentiates an individual residential dwelling unit from a residential rental property, which may contain multiple individual residential dwelling units. And then the definition of dwelling was moved from Section 138.3 into 138.7A. So there's all the changes that were made, and again, they were all just minor clerical changes. We've worked closely with Mr. Tequita to direct this and to come up with this program, so I would defer to him with any questions on the technical aspects of this. But this is something that he believes will be in the best interest of the township.
Matt, would you like to, would you like to discuss the, the agenda item for us? Give me a summary from the, you know, from the code standpoint.
Yes. So the, the program, or the ordinance, I should say, does remove the requirement for residential resale inspections. So the township will no longer do inspections on any resale of a single-family dwelling in the township. The only thing we will require are four separate certifications, one for your heater, one for your chimney and your flue, one for the sewer system, and then one for the electrical panel. Once we receive those with the applications, then we can issue a certificate of occupancy. We will then take, shift all our resources and focus really our attention on all the rental properties in the township, which would include all single-family. We call them residential rentals, as well as the apartment complexes that we have in the township. All of those complexes will be, and rentals will be subject to an annual common area inspection. So every year, we'll go through, inspect all the common areas within the complexes and the individual rental units. And then we'll also do three-year inspections, which, what that means is for every unit, every dwelling, or every, sorry, every apartment unit that has been occupied for a period of three years or more, where there's been no change in tenancy, we will enter that unit and do an inspection of the interior. So every year, we will, every year, effectively, we will have three-year inspections of individual units. And the apartment complex will run or start a registry of all those units that have had extended tendencies.
Okay, great. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So that's, that's the program in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Do, is there any board comment, Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a few. The, when does that three-year period start?
We'll start that this year. So what will happen is we're going to reach out to the, we'll coordinate with complexes, reach out to them, and they'll start to create a list of all those. So the first, you know, year or two, it's going to be a fair amount of, well, maybe a fair amount of inspections that we have to do. After that, it'll start to peter out, but we will start this year with the registry.
Okay. And in your opinion, does this, UNO always protected the buyer, from what I understand? Does this, does it still protect the buyer from, from, from this, in your opinion?
Yes, it does. I mean, with, with the resale, you're talking about the resales, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. With the way, you know, the, the real estate agencies are set up with the private home inspections and all the other forms that they have to fill out, there's a lot of protection for the buyer. That's, that's already incorporated into the industry. And for the, the level of inspection that currently, the home inspectors do privately is far, far greater than what the township's program was providing. With these certifications, all the essentials will be, will make sure the essentials are covered. And then that doesn't, there still will be a, a property history review of, you know, their property history file. So any open violations or open permits will still be listed on that certificate when we, when it's issued, so that the buyer and seller are aware of what's outstanding.
Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No comments. It all sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have a couple. Mr. Tequita, who keeps track of all the rental properties in Falls Township? Would that be the code office, the fire marshal's office?
It is, it's going to be the code department.
And how are we funding this program?
What we'll do is, is there's going to be a charge for common air inspections. It's at a rate of $15 per unit, and this will be presented to the board. I had to make sure this is going to be adopted before I want to present the fees. But we're looking at a $15 per unit charge for common air inspections. And then for the three years, it's going to be a $50 per unit charge.
And the last question is, is this consistent with other municipalities in the area, or are we going outside the boundaries on this?
No, this is consistent with all the other municipalities.
Thank you.
Mr. Tequita, my, I guess this is more of a comment slash question, but I was, just wanted to be clear, and if you could follow up. We ask questions about the UNO process, and that only pertains to residential, correct? So commercial, whatever we're doing for the commercial property will still be in effect, and that is not going to change?
That's correct. Yes. This only pertains to residential apartment complexes, residential resales. The commercial standards will, will remain the same.
Okay. And just for the record and for anybody's, anybody that's watching, I just don't want to screw up here, but we'll still be requiring a home inspection, a chimney certification, a heater certification, an electrical certification, and sewer certification? Just those five items?
No.
For residential resale?
We do not require home inspection. That's going to be between the buyer and the seller. That is their.
Okay. So it's just the four, the four items then?
Correct.
Not including that. Okay. And, and just, just a comment I wanted to make that, and, you know, thank him publicly, but Jamie Ridge from the Suburban Realtors Alliance, I mean, he was, you know, a big part of, of asking questions and contributing to, to this ordinance. So I did, I did reach out to him and send him an email thanking him, but I did want to thank him at our meeting as well. Anything from the professionals other than Lauren? Anybody else have any questions? Lauren, you're good? Mike, okay. Is there any public comment?
That any motion include the changes that I referenced at the beginning of the.
Okay. Okay. Dave, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass the ordinance, including the, the changes that Ms. Gallagher pointed out.
I'll like to second it.
Okay, what was the ordinance number?
It is ordinance number 2021-1.
Okay, Mr. Rocco, could you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway.
Yes.
Mr. Boraski.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes. I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everyone's work on that.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number three, consider authorization for advertisement for ordinance amending Chapter 172, smoking, to add Article 3 Township-owned property. Mr. Tequita or Ms. Gallagher, could you summarize item three for us?
Certainly. This ordinance is pretty straightforward. It would prohibit smoking or use of smokeless tobacco or vaping in, on the, any property owned by the township except in designated areas. This kind of mirrors what we did in the park a few years back, so this would just expand it to be all township-owned property.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, any board comment or questions? Mr. Rocco? Mr. Galloway?
Not.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
And I have, I just have one question. At our township building now, do we currently have designated smoking areas? Or are you just can smoke? Anybody?
We do not have designated. We do not.
Okay. Item, for item number three, Dave, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway.
Yes.
Mr. Boraski.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, just to clarify, the motion was to authorize just for advertisement only, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is consider proposal for geese management services at the Falls Township Community Park. I don't know if, know if Mr. Andrews is still here. I don't know if we, we, yeah, Mr. Andrews, I guess you can summarize where, you know, where we are this year as opposed to last year and what we have going on.
Right. Thanks, thanks back again. Yeah, basically, we, we've been conducting this comprehensive geese management program for several years now. And, you know, it's, it's paid dividends at the community parks, really reduced the geese population. You know, it's really made the park a lot safer, you know, for our patrons, you know, for the youth to use our fields and everything. So we recommend doing this every year. Want to continue doing that. This year, we are looking to bring a new company aboard. In the past, we've had one company that did most of the harassment. Things like on-water harassment, noise, lasers, so forth, and another company with border colleagues. The company I'm recommending switching over to this year, it's kind of an all-in-one. Yeah, they do the egg adling, they do the, the border collie harassment, they do the on-water harassment, lasers, you know, noise, whatever it takes. And they, they're here tonight. I have a couple of representatives, Mr. Robert Hawk and Mr. Lenny Toro, to answer any questions about their services. And, yeah, I'd like, I'd like for the board to consider their proposal tonight going forward.
And we did prepare an indemnity agreement that mirrors what we had done with these types of services in the past, so that, I believe, was in the board's packets this evening.
Correct.
All right. We'll start with board comment. Mr. Rocco?
Yes, so as you said, Mr. Andrews, we've been doing this for probably a good five years, maybe more.
Yeah, probably 2015, we started. The, the real intensity. We always had the egg adling program before that, that sort of thing. But we really didn't pick up, pick up in intensity till about, you know, 2015. So I guess six years now, think about it.
Okay, good, good. So, Mr. Toro, are you familiar with the park itself? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
You're on mute, sir.
Yeah, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, do you got me?
Yeah, I got you.
At your park, I actually done a demonstration there about 12 years ago, and I've actually spoke to somebody last year. We've been here actually recently, but I am very familiar.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just want to make sure, apparently, the geese, or the goose, whatever you call them, they always go back to the same place to start laying their eggs. So
Correct.
I just want to make sure you're aware of where they're at and how to.
I'm not aware of the locations of the nest, you know. Hopefully, if some people are familiar, they could point them out, but I'll do my own research.
Okay. And, and what's your plan for the border colleagues?
Well, we come there six days a week, multiple times a day, day and night. And that's what it's going to take to rid these guys. You know, six, six years, in my opinion, is a long time. I don't want to reduce the amount of geese. I want to rid the property of them. You know, you might, you're going to get some stragglers. There's no doubt about that, because you have a very attractive property.
Right.
You have the grazing and the pond. You know, my goal is to keep them from overnighting. Nighttime is going to be a big deal to me.
Okay.
If you stop them from overnighting there, your chances are you're going to have the, the grazers go somewhere else.
Right.
But nesting, you could forget, nesting is every year process. We're going to have to stay on top of that.
Right. You do, what do you call it? Capture as well?
No, we don't capture.
Yeah, okay.
No, we're, it's illegal for us to capture.
Okay, well, you don't have a license?
Well, we have licenses to do our job as far as harassing geese with dogs, but as far as capturing, that's not something that we get involved with.
Okay. Fair enough. We, the company we use could obtain a license. They just, I don't know, prefer not to.
Yeah, correct.
Keep in mind that I'm a franchise owner, one of 15 franchises in our corporate agreement, which is in New Jersey. We would never be allowed to even capture through our agreements.
Oh, wow.
Peter would not allow that. Peter wouldn't allow that for us or humane society. You know, obviously, if they're injured, there are certain programs you can go to to capture them, but not to rid the property of them.
Got it. Understood. Where, where's your closest client to us?
To you? Oh, let's see, let's see.
It's a Bucks County Business Park in Levittown.
Yeah.
That's where we.
Bucks County, yeah, Bucks County Business Park, we did. We're getting ready to start the, what is it, Jefferson Memorial, Jefferson Hospital? We're getting ready to start that. We have a couple of residences in New Hope that we take care of.
We've proposals in with Marsville Yardley and Levittown, and also trying to get business at, over in Bristol Township. We've been discussing with Bristol Township back and forth, Sesame Place, Ox Valley Mall, so we're, we're pestering the area. We are, we're trying over there.
Right. Is there any products that you'd recommend for smaller areas? We do have, we have a pond in one of the neighborhoods that is a troubled area. I don't know, Brian, Mr. Andrews, have you talked about this?
I could talk a little more about that. Yeah, we, we actually purchased some product last year, the flight control, which gets sprayed, and basically that deters the geese from eating the, the overgrowth in the grass there. And we did install one of those intermittent lights that go in the pond there, as opposed to throw the geese off. Now, in all honesty, we, when COVID hit, we, we were going to do this year in 20, in 2020. When COVID hit, we were going to really, really attack that strongly, spray the product, use the light. We didn't really get around to it. So the plan is to this year is to hit that strong, and what we're going to do is try that product in that area over, over on Martha Circle, Martha Drive, you know, with the product and the, and the light, and we're going to do a weekly log there and, you know, see how effective that really is. For the community park being so big, that probably wouldn't be feasible. I think we've done that in the past. But, I mean, Lenny can jump in on that, Lenny or Robert, you know, what their opinions are on a large area like ours.
I agree 100% on the large pond. It would not be effective. I haven't seen the retention pond. I really can't give you my opinion on that.
Yeah, if you could, maybe, Brian, before we even start the, the chemicals.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions. I just hope you succeed. Thank you.
That's my goal. Hey, Mr. Palmer?
No, I have no questions.
Um, I was, I was glad Mr. Rocco brought up the Fallsington Pond. I did, I did want to. Um, I was, I was glad Mr. Rocco brought up um the Fallsington Pond. I did, I did want to um bring that up. And, you know, I understand that after talking to Mr. Tequila today, that the product um should have been put down in, in the spring, you know, and unforeseen circumstances, you know, came up. So hopefully we do, you know, I want to try other avenues. And I think that's a great area. I've said this is the third year that, you know, I've have said this and, and I would, you know, really hope this year we can, we can hit the ground running with, with that park. I do want to uh comment and, and ask you guys if we could, did we notify the residents of that area on Martha Circle, Market the Drive last year?
Um, to be.
That we were doing anything?
I believe, I'm trying to remember, we might have sent a mail or out. I'm not sure. Um, I'm trying to remember about that, to be quite honest with you. Um, I can follow up on that. I don't want to tell you something that isn't true or is, you know. Um, but the plan, we will if we have to, yes.
I just thought it would be good if we're gonna, if we're gonna move forward and put product down and we're gonna
Absolutely.
Keep a log and keep data. I think it would be important to maybe um ask the residents as well. You know, they're the ones that are ultimately looking out their back window every day and.
Yeah, I actually, I believe I did target the addresses there. And I'll double check, we sent them out. I think we did, but if we'll, we'll do it again. It's not a big deal. Um, before we do anything. And uh, I'll work with Public Works to coordinate that, you know, with the guys who will be doing the, you know, the spraying of the chemicals and, you know, checking that area. That's something I'll work with Jason Lawson on, you know, going forward. And, you know, we'll have a, a better update for you. Um, you know, this time next year or even sooner, to be honest with you. So.
Okay, great.
Can I ask you a question, please? Do they nest on that uh pond over there, that retention area?
Um, honestly, Lenny, I, I'm not really sure. That'd be something we, we'd have to check out, or I could have you take a look at it. We've had other companies take a look at that in the past. Um, I could definitely show it to you and, you know, and get your opinion on it. And I could share it with the board, you know, if there's something else, you know, that might work there that you think, you know, would be feasible.
Okay, because if you do have nesting there and you want us to go over and take care of the adling over there so that you don't have to worry about that.
Right, right. Yeah, it's something we have to look at.
Okay, all right. Um, Dave, do we have any public comment at this time for item number four?
Uh, no public comment.
Okay, um, Lauren or Mike? I'm sorry, Rocco?
I just wanted to know when, um, when would this service start? When are you planning on starting?
Yeah, go ahead, Len.
I plan on starting as soon as my proposal is signed and dated. You put the date on there.
Yeah.
And put your signature and uh you will have all your insurance documentations that I need to provide for you and we're ready.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, and um, and, um, for the record, the um, this is Geese Police of Philadelphia. Um, and the, the, uh, looks like the invoice will be billed monthly at fourteen hundred hours per month billed directly to the township. So that total, I believe that was sixteen thousand eight hundred, not including anything we just spoke about. And was that, um, is that what we spent? Is that we, we budgeted for last year or spent last year?
Actually, this'll, I anticipate a saving twenty-five to thirty percent going this route, over what we spent the past several years.
Okay.
Which is a real, real big incentive for us to switch over this year.
Is this a year round? Is this gonna be twelve months?
A twelve month, yeah.
Yeah, that was the other thing. We only did uh nine or ten.
It was ten months, I think. Yeah, I think it was ten.
I'll tell you the reason why they do that is because in the summer months, June and July, the geese aren't flying.
Correct.
They're mol, they're molting. And it's gonna be my job to make sure there's nobody there to molt. I want to try to get them out of there before they molt. So do you have a nice empty pond during the summertime?
Um, Lauren, have you had the chance or Mike to review the agreement?
We did, and we would just recommend that any approval this evening be uh conditioned on their um executing an indemnity agreement with the township, which they have been provided a copy of.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we had board comment, uh, there was no public comment. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion, item number four.
I make the motion to approve.
Yeah, I like to second it.
And was made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, pull the board?
And then, just for one clarity, that's subject to the indemnity agreement as well, right?
Hey, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Hey, thank you, guys. Uh, I look forward to, um, you know, your help in cleaning up our park.
Go get them, Lenny.
We'll take care of them for you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
For the record, that's always my favorite agenda item of the year. All right.
Okay, we're gonna uh move along to item number five, which is consider purchase of vehicles for the police department. I see we have um Chief, um, Chief Whitney's here and Mr. Tequila. I'm not sure who wants to jump on. Chief, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so these are four out of the five vehicles that are on our replacement plan and in our capital budget for replacement this year. The four vehicles before you are the patrol units. There's one additional unit to replace an old unit used by our detective bureau that we're still working out the details on. But uh, this is for the purchase of four twenty twenty-one Ford Explorers to be upfit as uh police vehicles for the patrol division. We're replacing uh one Ford Explorer that was destroyed in a crash this summer, uh, the pursuit and crash that injured Officer Redonda. Uh, replacing one Ford Explorer that's currently uh up for replacement in the fleet and two old uh Dodge Chargers that are up for replacement this year.
Um, okay, I just wanted to jump ahead maybe real quick and ask a question. But were these vehicles, um, will they match our current fleet or are these gonna be ghosted out vehicles?
Uh, four are black and white and one is ghosted.
Okay. Um, Mr. Rocco, you have any questions?
I don't, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Galloway?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, one, one fast question. Um, with some of our high speed pursuits and um it, it, Ford Explorers, uh, just as comparable as the Chargers for some of these pursuits? Or is it more on all seat, all, all your type of vehicle? What, what are you looking for with this?
So the Explorers that Ford puts out in their police package are pursuit rated. Uh, they're not quite as fast as the Dodge Chargers, which, to be honest, is probably better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, and I have no other questions. I was just curious of the uh color scheme on the vehicles this year. So, uh, at this point, I will entertain a motion, item number five.
Uh, excuse me, we have one.
Okay, go ahead. Motion to open public comment.
I make that motion.
Okay.
On favor?
Jeff, uh, we had one public comment. I said, we had one public comment. Tony's coming in with public comment.
Yeah, we were just opening public comment.
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
Hello, Tony?
Uh, just a question. And the vehicle that was destroyed in a crash, was that covered by insurance or do we self insure?
There was a, an insurance payout on that. Of course, it wasn't the full value of the vehicle. Uh, but we do, uh, we do have a little bit of a savings here because we had an insurance payout on them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Clark, do I have to open and close public comment every time there's an agenda item comment?
Um, we've always done that as habit in Falls in the now twenty years I've been here. But there's no, it's, it's always been our practice, but it's not really required.
Okay, that's fine. Is there, uh, is there anybody else, Dave?
No more public comment.
Is there a motion to close public comment?
I make that motion.
Okay, uh, we have public comment and board questions and concerns. Uh, at this point, I will entertain a, a motion.
I make that motion.
Second a motion.
Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you, chief. Um, item num, item number six is consider purchase of vehicle for the Fire Marshal's Department. Uh, Mr. DePulito?
Yes, that was for a two thou, it'll be a two thousand and twenty-one Ford Explorer. Similar to what the police are doing. Uh, it will replace, it'll take a two thousand and four Ford F-150 out of service. And this will be the replacement for that. Trying to get on a replacement program where every two years, instead of having multiple at one time. So this, this should set us up for two more years.
Hey, great. Um, Mr. Rocco, questions?
Yeah, just one. What do we do with the uh, the old vehicle?
Sell them.
Okay. I know we used to kind of hand me, hand them down. No, no.
They, quite honestly, this one is what seventeen years old.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the one we're getting rid of. It became a spare. That, that's the way we rotate them out. The one that will, that'll go out, it'll be sold. The one that's being currently used will become a spare and, and so on. We just rotate them down. I, I don't see any, any value in trying to hand this down.
Got it, cool. All right, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, um, and actually, I just, just want to make one comment that this, these veh, this vehicle and the police vehicles were all being purchased um through Co-Stars, correct? And I think it was kind of local too. I mean, it's Dolestown, but it was Fred Beans, all the vehicles.
Uh, no, the one coast, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nels.
That, that's correct for mine. Uh, our vehicles are just from Fred Beans and, and they're, they're all Co-Stars.
Right, correct. All Co-Stars, though.
Okay. Um, all right, at this uh moment, I will entertain a motion to approve purchase of the vehicle for, for the Fire Marshal Office.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, that takes us to item number seven is consider rescheduling the February Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, so for February, uh, Monday, February fifteenth, uh, well, that's a holiday. So, uh, we normally move these to the following day. It would put us to Tuesday, February sixteenth at six thirty. If anyone, um, anyone have any questions or concerns about that date?
Sounds good.
Hey, Mr. Tequila, the um, the calendar was clear?
Yes, the calendar is clear.
Okay, do we have to, um, do we have to vote on that? Ms. Gallagher, do we have to vote on that?
Yes, I believe, yes.
Okay, so, um, at this point, I will entertain a motion to uh move our meeting to Tuesday, February sixteenth at six thirty.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Okay, motion remained seconded. Mr. Rocco, pull the board, please.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay, um, item number eight was, um, uh, was an, an item, agenda item that we, we moved from our reorg meeting. Uh, we, there is a couple of boards that need to be appointed um now to continue. And I think we have a, a resolution for TOFA. We have a resolution for a zoning hearing board. And we also have a, a vacancy on a planning commission where we had a, um, we had a resident who was interested. So at this point, I will entertain, um, motion to approve or appoint.
Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Doug Mull to the zoning hearing board. Um, effective immediately.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Tequila, does, there, there's, that would be a resolution, correct? So, um, is there other vacancies on a zoning hearing board or is that the only one?
That is the only one.
Okay, and what's the, um, so that's done by resolution, correct?
Yes, it's resolution number twenty twenty-one dash three.
Okay, um, motions remain seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Do we have anything else?
Yes, I would also like to make a motion, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash four, to appoint Brian Benny to the TOFA Township of Falls uh, authority. Um, again, effective immediately for a full term.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Could you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, question. Uh, Mr. Clark, do I abstain from that or no?
No, because your vote on this will not have a, a direct financial benefit to you or a member of your immediate family. So you can vote on this.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
Uh, I'm a yes.
Uh, okay, and I'll actually uh make the next motion to appoint Colin Henderson to fulfill the term of Tom Hughes on the planning commission. I believe there was a year, I believe there was a year left.
That's right, yep.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Can you pull the board, please?
Sure. Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay, uh, that took care of the TOFA resolutions, zoning hearing board resolution and the vacancy on the planning commission. Um, while we're on this agenda item, I would like to just take a second and discuss, um, the planning commission. I think it was last year that we moved that commission down to five members from seven. We had just some turnaround and, and we had trouble fulfilling it. And it was easier for us. So they have a quorum, um, to make sure we took it down to five. Uh, with the board at this point being full, we have great members there. I would, uh, like to see the township, Mr. Tequila, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clark, Ms. Gallagher, if we can uh, see what needs to be done to make, uh, of, um, I just drew a blank, a, um, right. So if we can add that to the uh planning commission like we do on our hearing board and, and maybe you guys can give us a quick summary of how we can do that.
We can take a look at that and then report back to you. You're, you're talking about making an alternate to the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, we can take a look at that and then, uh, report back to you at the February meeting?
Yeah, please. And, and, um, the next question to follow up to that is, would it be a conflict of interest if the alternate was a, a member of another board, say the zoning hearing board or the supervisors?
We'll take a look at that. There, I, it'll most likely be a conflict if there, if it's a supervisor. Um, because they're an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors, but we'll take a look at both of those issues.
All right, great, thank you. Um, so we're moving along to item number nine, which is the minutes. Any questions?
Mr. Boraski, before we leave, later meet, um, I think we should just note to anybody who has put in a letter that because we're not meeting, we haven't really, um, because of COVID and there's not in-person meetings or even Zoom meetings, we've kind of put it on hold. So anyone who has a letter in, if they can just relax, we'll, we'll get through it once we get back to some more of the routine here.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, item number nine is, yes.
I'm sorry, if I could just clarify, because I'm looking at my list on the planning commission, I have a request for Brian Benny to be reappointed.
Oh, yeah, I did. I thought there was another one. I'm sorry, okay. I'm, I'll make the motion to uh reappoint Mr. Benny to uh, a term on the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion and second, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tequila, appreciate that. Okay, let's try this again. Item number nine is the minutes. Excellent minutes as always, Mr. Paul. I did have, um, I did have one thing. I'm just trying to go through the minutes here real quick and I will get back to you guys. So for December twenty-first, twenty twenty, item number eleven, uh, consider authorization for advertisement for ordinance for the waivers of the sewage pretreatment standards. I believe I, I thought there was an issue with the, with the motion and second. I thought I made the second on that. I just wanted to, I don't know if it was important, but I just wanted to kind of bring that up, that's all. I don't know if that matters.
So are you asking to amend, uh, the minutes, uh, Mr. Boraski?
Unless anybody else remembered it differently, but I thought that I seconded that, that's all. So if we don't need to, but we don't need to, but I just wanted to.
No, but if that's your recollection, the minute should reflect what, what you're recalling. And unless any of your fellow board members remember it differently, uh, the minute should, could be amended, so.
Okay, I would like to amend the minutes to show that I second it, um, seconded that motion. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Galloway.
Or do we have?
Yeah, go. Motion.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you. Um,
Is someone going to say it since Mr. Dent isn't here?
Oh, I made the comment already.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I missed it. I just didn't want Mrs. Bull to feel left out.
Nope, excellent job. All right, so we're going to, at this point, move, um, number fourteen, we're going to insert number fourteen. It's a presentation of the Fire Marshal's year-end report. Uh, Mr. DeLito, Mr. DeBrito does have another commitment that he has to be at. So we, uh, if you guys are okay, we're going to insert, uh, number fourteen here. Uh, go ahead.
All right. If you would just bear with me one second, I'm not the, uh, guru that some of the others are with this. There we go. Okay, in this COVID time, I figured I would do something via PowerPoint, and I promised Mr. Palmer that I wouldn't take too long. So, this is a report that I do every year. And first, uh, I want to thank John Weiss. He did put it together for me. He's more pro, or more, uh, professional with PowerPoint. I think it came out pretty nice. But this is our, our department year-end report, uh, for the Director Mercy Services and the Office of the Fire Marshal. Um, just a quick highlight of what the office consists of. We have five full-time people. We have three inspectors and a full-time clerk. Um, some of the responsibilities of the office, we do the fire inspections, as you know, fire investigations. For last year, we did thirty-three, which is about an average. Do all plan reviews for any kind of fire alarm or sprinkler or suppression system that's going in. There's also supervision of the staff, which includes distributing what they're going to do during the day for follow-ups and inspections. Um, there's a budget preparation for the department, and of course, we all respond to fire calls and emergency calls during the day, which is a big part of it. Um, we conduct inspections, as you know, for every business in Falls Township. That includes every school, every hospital, or every school and every hotel, every daycare, um, motels. We hit them all. Most of these take more than one inspection. We have to follow up to make sure they corrected any violations. In two thousand and twenty, we did nine hundred and sixty-two. Uh, again, that's pretty average. It, it's quite a bit more than last year, though, quite honestly. Um, it was an eleven percent increase. Um, don't have a, a good reason. I mean, part of that is we find people that are occupying without use and occupancy permits, so that's part of it. I, I don't, I can't explain some of the others, but that's our total for twenty twenty. The inspectors also do emergency calls and fire calls, which is, you know, quite a big part because it supplements the volunteers. Volunteers, as you know, are very, um, light during the day. So this is a, a big part of their job, and we follow up on every call from the night before. So any call that requires a follow-up, which would mean to make sure that the alarm system is back in order, there's no outstanding issues, we also do that. Um, these are some of the numbers of what everyone did for this year. Now, these numbers, we did a total of a hundred and twenty-one. That number's a little skewed, only because of COVID. Uh, there were, there were times that we were working strictly from home and leaving home and going to do the job. So some of these numbers weren't making it back into the office. So we did them all, but these numbers are probably slightly lower than they really were. Um, it's a graph that just shows the inspections that we do every year. You can see across the board for the last five years, it was pretty consistent. Two thousand and nineteen, it dropped. Again, I, I don't have a good, good reason for it, other than businesses that we caught that didn't go through the proper process, but I, I doubt that it was almost a hundred. Um, the yellow line shows you follow-ups, and that's pretty consistent. Now, in twenty twenty, it dropped substantially. Uh, again, I think some of that number is because we were doing it from a remote location. Um, they all got done, but, uh, it showed a hundred and twenty-one. I, I'm sure it was slightly higher, just because we weren't in the office every day. This is the, this graph will show you what the volunteer fire companies do, uh, for the past year. These numbers are pretty similar to years past. Um, that's a lot of calls for a volunteer fire company. When you look at, you know, anywhere from three to six hundred and thirty, that's a lot of responses that you're counting on volunteers. This graph will show you the past five-year history of those calls. You can see the red is Station Thirty, which is Falls. They're pretty consistent right across the board. Uh, Levittown in the, I guess that's green, right across the board, pretty consistent. Feral Hills dropped in nineteen and twenty. Uh, I do attribute that to a lot of mutual aid that was in Middletown. Middletown has since put up a full-time fire truck and a special service, which they're running during the day, which in essence, uh, doesn't require such a mutual aid response from outside the township. So, and because Feral Hills borders Middletown, that was, uh, what I believe are most of those, the call reduction. So you can see the engine up during the day did work for Middletown. Just a, uh, a chart that shows what the squad has done in Falls Township. Uh, in twenty twenty, they ran over twenty-eight hundred calls in Falls. Eighteen hundred of, over eighteen hundred required, uh, a medic. And, uh, you know, over a thousand were basic, but majority of the calls in Falls Township were medics. Um, some of the things that we offer are fire training. We do fire extinguisher training. But due to the pandemic, we did not do any of the training this year. We hope to get back into that this year. Everything gets back to some sort or some type of normalcy. A couple of years ago, few years ago, uh, one of the supervisors presented a program where the public works employees that are firemen can respond to calls during the day. Uh, currently, we have four public works employees that are firemen. They do respond. They are a big help to supplement the volunteers. So between their department and my department, we have, what do we have? Eight, eight people that are responding to calls during the day. These are the statistics for twenty twenty by person. Um, again, some of these calls are probably slightly higher, but due to the fact that we weren't in the office, I'm sure some got dropped by the wayside, although we did respond even, you know, of course, during the pandemic. But these are the number, uh, by person of what they responded to during the day. Smoke trailer we use during fire prevention. We probably go to about a dozen fire departments. We visit schools. We take to the Toucha Truck and the Family Fest. It's a, uh, it's a great piece for public relations, and it does show the kids how to, how to get out of a smoke-filled environment. It's non-hazardous. And just like everything else this year, we weren't able to take it out and use it during COVID. But we do expect that we'll be back with that this year, hopefully, taking it to the different open houses and such. Uh, something else we do, Operation Save-A-Like, we've been a partner with them for as long as I've been here. Channel Six gives out free smoke detectors, and we get down every year and pick them up and then install them. Uh, this year, we did twenty-six new. We put in thirty batteries in people's homes. They called us, said they needed help, and that was in twelve different Falls Township homes. I think it's a great program. We're happy to do it. It's free to the residents. Uh, all they have to do is pick up the phone. If they have batteries, we change them. If they don't have smoke detectors, we put them in. Uh, hopefully, Channel Six will be doing. I, I'm waiting for the call this year. Uh, this is just a quick pie chart, shows our, our, uh, revenue for the department. This is about, about average. We brought in over two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Uh, it helps to supplement us from our day-to-day. You can see about sixty-three percent of our money comes from the fire inspection money, comes out of businesses. Uh, about thirty-six percent comes from fire permits, which are permits for fire alarms, sprinklers, et cetera, and then a small portion for fire reports and reviews. This year, I'm, I'm proud to say we started a food drive. Started in the beginning of the year. Our best estimate is that we've collected over fifteen thousand pounds of food, and we've donated them to, uh, various food pantries in our area. Uh, normally, the three local ones, we, we've been using all year. And this comes with help from the big town. Uh, we have Waste Management and, and Penn Warner Club partnered with us. They've been a tremendous help. North Park, uh, Neighborhood Group, uh, they partnered with us. We have some residents that call us every month. Lions Drive, uh, Palm Lane, Waltham Road, just to name a few. They, every month, they're calling us saying they have a pickup. We go and get it. It's non-contact. They leave it outside. We collect it. We deliver it. But I, I think it's a great program, and I hope to see it continue and be successful years to come. Some of the accomplish, accomplishments that we had this year, we installed some panic, this is mostly security, panic buttons at different areas throughout the building. We did key fobs and, and restricted some doors in our building. We started ID cards, which are a fob and a, and a picture. Um, we keyed our doors alike for convenience a, and it also for accountability, so we know who has keys. Uh, our door numbering is part of NIMS, um, which, you know, i- is for security. Again, we installed glass at different departments, including, including code and, uh, the tat, not the tax office, uh, Park and Recs, to keep, you know, a little bit more security for the people that work. And due to, uh, some budget money that we had left over, we were able to purchase three new AEDs that we have. So now in each Fire Marshal vehicle on the street, we have an, uh, AED. Uh, we're, we put up some cameras and LED lights at Von Hoppin, which paid off, I think, in the first week because we were able to interrupt a drug deal. Um, the police were able to make an arrest. We have Wi-Fi installed at Falls Community Park that we're currently working on, and we're getting quotes for cameras in a community park. Um, we're able to better our communication with antennas for our radio system here in the building. Uh, our second floor, we're able to, to clean out and get it ready for future rent opportunities. Uh, COVID, infamous COVID, all year. It's been a living, breathing document. Policies changed, created. Seems like every day we're, we're reevaluating and changing something, but that's something we're able to do. And I believe between this side, the police side, all working together, Park and Recs, Public Works, we are able to keep this building, knock on wood, pretty safe and, and clean and kept the, the pandemic out of here. I already spoke about the food drive. We were able to get a grant writer, and we did apply for and get a grant for some pre-planning software. The guys are using that currently to pre-plan different businesses in town. Um, and these are underway. The cameras, like I said, at the park, um, the building renovations, and we've been working on new policies, revising old ones as needed. Um, if anyone's interested in the food drive, that's how you get us. Falls Food Bank at fallstp.com. You can call us at the number listed, two one five nine four nine nine thousand, or extensions two five five. Smoke detector, same thing. Just call us. We're happy to come out. And I'll be happy to take any questions. And Mr. Palmer, I don't know if you timed it, but I hope I kept on track here.
Thank you, Mr. Dippel. Thank you, Mr. DeBrito. Um, very informative. Um, I will turn to the board at this point for any, uh, comments or questions that they, they may have for you. Start, Mr. Rocco?
No, other than, uh, no, just a, a quick comment. Excellent job. Um, really appreciate the way you run your department and, uh, the fact that you keep track of these things, I think is really good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
Uh, just, uh, love the food, food drive, Rich. I remember you bringing that up a couple of years ago. You always wanted to do that. It seemed to be your passion, and, uh, congratulations on the success. And thanks for the.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Palmer?
No, I just want to echo everybody. Um, the one thing that he did leave out, um, when this first, uh, hit us, this COVID, uh, your department really went out of your way for the elderly in our community, and you worked hand-in-hand with the senior center, uh, seeing what you could do with those guys. So, uh, your department, uh, really went out of their way to take care of, uh, the compromised people in our community. So want to thank you, and, um, yeah, it's all good.
Thanks, Mr. Palmer.
Um, yeah, Rich, I think that, um, you know, it was a great job on a presentation. I think, um, John did a great job putting that.
I'll pass it along.
Yeah, um, but I, but in all seriousness, I think, uh, I think, I think it was nice, um, you know, I'm sorry if I just don't remember if we did this before or not, but, but I think it was, uh, informative and, and necessary, I think, for the residents. It's nice to see, um, you know, how much is involved. We, we, you know, sometimes we take for granted, we just see you guys are there and the fire service is there, and we just see your, you know, your trucks flying by us on Lincoln Highway or, you know, Trenton Road or New Falls Road headed to call. So, but, you know, there's so much more that you guys are doing and staying busy, um, and being proactive for Falls Township. So I do thank you for that.
Thanks, Mr. Brasky. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, moving along, uh, item number ten, uh, is an engineer's report. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Brasky. Board members, um, you will see that the report for the month of December shows that we had four new land developments submitted, two new earth disturbance projects submitted, and one new floodplain permit application submitted. Um, all projects are in various stages of review, approval, indoor construction. Um, all, um, updates are identified and read as usual. Uh, uh, point out a couple of notable points, um, in terms of the land developments, the projects, MM Metals, JG Patruci, and Alro Steel are all underway with earth-moving activities. MM Metals is a little bit further along. Um, they're actually starting the erection of the second building. Um, the air gas project is moving along as well. Uh, light on the site work. They're still setting equipment. Um, the four projects identified at the bottom are the new submissions. They are in various stages of review and approval. Um, they include the Tavo Packaging. It's a seventy-seven thousand square foot building addition down on Canal Road to the existing facility. Um, the Britton Industries project is the, uh, former junkyard. Um, they are in a process of converting that under a lease into, um, a mulch storage area. Um, the North Point Phase One was submitted. That's the one million square foot warehouse on River Road. That's their first land development application, um, based on a development agreement. And then the Stallwork Morrisville LLC, that project is a nine hundred and ninety thousand square foot warehouse and office on Pennsylvania Avenue. You recall, um, the board approved the text amendment for that project. Uh, the North Point project, um, is going to come out of review and, and be presented at the planning commission this month, while the other three will be, uh, delayed till February due to plan changes, um, technical comments and stormwater management issues that we're working with, uh, various engineers on. In terms of the earth disturbance projects, um, most of the projects identified in red, except for the last three, are all pretty much approved. There are a lot of pools, and I think all but one are substantially complete. Um, a notable point on the KPK development, you probably haven't heard about that in, in a little bit, um, but that's a project where they're reclaiming the lake across, uh, Wee Chief Road from the Community Park Lake. And, uh, and, and an interesting development, they found a way to convey material under Penn Valley Road. And, um, they, they found an old, um, kind of a conveyor slash tunnel that they expanded. So it appears that they won't need to use our roads to deliver material to that side. They can use the conveyor under Penn Valley, which is, and they, and they get real positive. Um, in terms of the ongoing, uh, township projects, um, on the two thousand and twenty road program, we have sidewalks and aprons constructed on Gilbert Drive. Um, so that's in, in good condition. Um, we have stoned, um, aprons and no sidewalk on, at least hasn't been removed yet on Simons. Um, and so we're evaluating with the contractor whether it makes sense to continue full speed ahead during the winter or hold off a month and a half, and we're not sure where we're going to go with that. Um, we may hold off on the concrete work, but continue on improvements for Elbow Lane. So I'll be able to report better next month on what the determination is. Um, but in general, good condition. And the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three road program, as you'll recall, that's the design and construction of the, of the drives. Um, the survey work is done on Elderberry Drive, and the design is substantially complete. We are probably going to come back to the board for authorization to advertise in March. Um, and the survey for Pine Wood is about halfway done, so we'll be moving into the design on that section as soon. And the survey for Pine Wood is about halfway done. So we'll be moving into the design on that section as soon as we receive all the survey. That's the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any board members have questions or comments? Mr. Rocco?
Just one. So stalwart, is that, that's pretty, I'm pretty sure that's what you got through.
That's the, that's the, it's about a million square feet of warehouse and office on Pennsylvania Avenue. The plans were submitted. That was the function of, or the subject of the text amendment to the RD one zoning district. And the plans are under review. We found, you know, we kind of anticipated that there's going to be some issues regarding the floodplain and the stormwater management and how they're addressing them. And of course, you know, it's correct, you know, there are some issues that we have to work out with the engineer and make sure that the stormwater management is sound with respect to where it's located with respect to the floodplain.
Okay, good.
A little bit, a little bit of a work in progress. I don't believe that there'll be, I think it would be a probably a heavy lift for them to make it to the February Planning Commission. So they'll probably be at the Planning Commission in March, once we resolve those issues.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad to see that they're moving forward. I wasn't sure what the, what the future held for that, but, no, excellent report. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Man, I have no questions either. Thanks for the report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Is there any? Do we ask for a public comment on engineer's report? Okay, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay, no public comment. Board members had a chance for questions. At this point, I will entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, a motion to accept the engineer's report.
I make that motion.
Second it.
Which remains second it. Mr. Rocco, you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number eleven is the bill list and I am going to turn it over to Mr. Rocco for a summary on the bill list.
Thank you. Yes, the bill lists were January eighteenth. The total for the bills are two million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and two cents. Some of the bigger items are, there's a bill for eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars approximately for Stanball Nest, which is a new IT service that we're using. We brought these guys in to help clean up some of the aging technology. So that was one. There's a bill for fifty-four thousand dollars for the fire marshal's new vehicle. Payroll is eight hundred thousand, nine hundred, two dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Just was trying to hit the big items here. Looks like our workman's comp is ninety thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Oh, and the police vehicles are a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So that makes up our total of two plus million.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Is there any questions regarding the bill list from board members? I'll turn back to Mr. Rocco. Any questions?
No, none for me.
Okay, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Not this time.
And I have no questions. Is there any public comment regarding the bill list?
No public comment.
Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the bill list for January twenty twenty-one.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number twelve takes us to executive session and we did do a report at the beginning of this meeting. So item number thirteen is the police department report and the chief is here tonight. You're on, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, I like the trend with PowerPoint becoming more used by people. We get the other departments on board. It's, this is a good thing.
I think they're copying off you, chief.
I, well, that's the best form of flattery, right? I, I make my own PowerPoint, though.
Okay.
It's just, you know, I'll tell Rich that tomorrow.
He's on. He hears you.
All right, so looking back at December, we were at minimum staffing fifty-three percent of the time. At the bottom, you know, we can always compare to the last four years where it's fluctuated back and forth. December is a time of year where people like to take off if they can get off. And that's the breakdown per squad. Group A day shift is glad it's twenty twenty-one because they were, they were short because of a personnel issue, but they're fully staffed now. So their numbers, numbers will be better this year. And you can really see with, that didn't line up to the group B, group, uh, group B days. That's actually flipped. They were zero percent and group A nights was at seventy-five percent. That's the typo. But when you're fully staffed, you can see you can really, you know, get people on the road. Just a reminder about our goals and objectives regarding staffing. We'd like to be above minimum staffing the majority of the time if we can be. And our overdoses. So we ended the year with a hundred and twenty-three overdoses, nine of which were fatal. So, I mean, that's nine lives lost and we'd like to continue to working that number until we get it to zero. But it's certainly a far cry from, you know, back in twenty sixteen when we had twenty-five fatalities in one year. So you can see that the numbers are kind of steadily decreasing, certainly when it comes to fatalities. And this is our calls for service. So here you can see we ended the year with almost eighteen thousand calls for service, which is down about two thousand from what it was. You know, we were pretty quiet at the beginning of COVID before everybody adjusted and got back to acting crazy. There were a couple of months there that there really wasn't too many calls for service. So, you know, the end result of that is it's slightly down from what it was prior. Kind of like you saw in the fire marshal's report regarding the rescue squad, we weren't a lot of medical calls. Twenty-two hundred and fifty-five medical calls for the year. That's a lot of medical calls to respond to. But we're out there to help. People are hurt. They need help. Our traffic crashes. So we ended the year just one short of a thousand traffic crashes with four fatal crashes this year. So, you know, as I always point out to people, the traffic crashes and drug overdoses are the two things that kill our citizens on a regular basis. So they remain a priority for us as a police department. Arrests, breakdown, summary arrests, juvenile arrests, year-to-date arrests. And that always kind of rolls into our hotels. This year was a big year for problems at our hotels. We had that homicide in the summertime at the Holiday Inn. However, they, they changed some procedures they've been following there and they kind of worked with us and got things under control. The Red Roof continues to struggle. I hope this year we could see things improve there. One of the things we look at every month are our arrest demographics by race to constantly monitor any, for any signs of bias-based policing. Our statistics don't really indicate an issue with bias-based policing. So that's something that we can all be proud of here. We did make an arrest last week, the District Attorney's Office and our people for the shooting that happened in the parking lot of the Commons at Falsington back on December first. There was an individual arrested for that. And I'd like to keep you guys in the loop when it comes to anything related to weapons and shots fired. We did have a shots fired investigation at the beginning of the month in December. A resident reported a bullet hole through his residence and our detectives are still investigating that case. It's an active, open case. And just kind of give you a glimpse into some of the kind of crazy drug-induced behavior that we see. We had a, an incident out of the Ace Motel where a woman who was clearly under the influence of drugs causing a problem at the motel was taken into custody and kind of did that passive resistance. You see sometimes on television where people just drop their weight and force you to carry them. But then when she got into the cell block, she completely reversed what she was doing and was spitting on everybody, was, was banging off everything, hitting her head against the wall. It was pandemonium until they can get her into a restraint chair and get her calmed down. Drugs are, do terrible things to people. And this program should be starting soon in about two weeks. This is the program funded through the county to provide a certified recovery specialist to ride with our police EMTs and respond to calls of overdoses and other drug-related calls to try to, in the field, connect people with treatment and then follow up to place them in treatment. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to help even more people in twenty twenty-one and get those numbers lower. This is a unique program. No other police department in the county is doing this. Ben Salem has a similar program that they run through their rescue squad. But we'll have this person out here in a police car with our police EMTs. And, you know, you really can't run a police department these days without giving crowd control training to your people. So we promulgated a policy and conducted training for the entire department on how to properly and appropriately engage in crowd control activities. Now, were we to have some kind of protest incident in Falls Township, we would ask the MRT team to be there. But our people would function as an arrest team if it became necessary to make arrests. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that things stay calm out there. However, we really need to give people the equipment and the training they need and to be effective so that nobody does anything you would want them to do. So we trained the entire department this month. And this is coming up as well. You know, it, just imagine how difficult it is for families who have missing children. I think it's important to, to step up our game regarding our response to missing children. And this should be in effect in February. We'll put out the policy and the training will be done and we'll meet truly a national standard for our response to missing and endangered children. And this is new software coming on board. So as we build out the, the in-car camera system in our fleet, we're also now having new software that will change the, or add to the forward-facing camera and make it a tag reader. So it'll read the tags of the vehicles that are in front of us driving down the road. That's great technology and it'll be nice to have that eventually. Every car in the patrol fleet will have it. I'm looking forward to seeing how this works myself, but we're putting the purchase orders through and getting the equipment installed. And the first quarter of this year will be up and running with vigilance. So I thought it was good to talk about some trends and Palmer, you kind of hit on this. We saw a tremendous increase in traffic pursuits from years prior in twenty twenty. Traffic pursuits, you know, haven't really been something that happened a great deal in Falls Township. We're always somewhere around half, half a dozen in the last, say, fifteen years. We had a lot of them back in the eighties, nineties when we had, you know, people doing crack. But here we go with meth and COVID. We had fifteen in twenty twenty. That's, that's a big increase for us. I could tell you shootings were also up. We had seven or eight shootings that were serious shootings in twenty twenty. But I wasn't really happy that the numbers were, were completely accurate. So I didn't put them up here for you. I wanted, I want to dig into those numbers a little bit more out of the records management system and give you a comparison nineteen to twenty on shootings, but I can definitely tell you they're up. And I think everybody noticed that. We had a slight decrease in fatal overdoses. We had eleven in twenty nineteen and we had nine last year in twenty twenty. I certainly hope that trend continues. And I thought I would share just some of the, the most frequent calls for service. So abandoned nine-one-ones or when somebody calls nine-one-one and then hangs up. Sometimes they're an accident. Sometimes there's somebody who needs help. We respond to a lot of those, a lot of business alarms, certainly a lot of domestic disputes, six hundred and forty-one. A lot of mental subject calls, two hundred and thirty-three. And that's an area where I think we need more training as a police department. If I think it's, it would benefit all of us and our community to continue increasing our training in that regard. Hundred and four retail thefts, a hundred and nine wanted subjects and five hundred and fifty-five check the wellbeings. Now, those are calls where somebody's worried about somebody and wants us to check on them. Sometimes they're medical emergencies. Sometimes they're drug overdoses. Sometimes they're mental health calls. You find all kinds of things and check the wellbeing calls, but those are things we respond to on a regular basis and five hundred and fifty-five of them last year. And that kind of wraps up my, my presentation tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, thank you, chief. At this point, we're going to turn to, at this moment, we'll turn to the, the board of supervisors. We'll start with Mr. Rocco. Any questions, concerns?
Just had one. Where does the crowd control training occur?
So I sent two officers to a Homeland Security Instructor School in December. And when they were certified as instructors, we took the IACP model policy on crowd control and kind of modified it to work with the equipment and people that we have. And then I had the two instructor officers train in separate sessions, each squad and the department. Part of it was classroom inside the roll call room and part of it was in the parking lot with, you know, the long sticks that you move people with. Hit people with them. You move people. And they already had their riot helmets, but, you know, it made sense to train them and not just give them big sticks.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as equipment, we're set for that.
We're set for what we do. I mean, the, the major incident response team had, I mean, they get in these protective suits and, and, you know, it's impossible to injure them. We have members of our department who are on MRT. We, we didn't get our officers all of that kind of equipment because they won't be placed in that kind of position. If there's a major incident, we'll have MRT there to hold the line and our officers will respond out as, as arrest teams. But even absent functioning as an arrest team, I thought this was just a skill set that everybody should have, the way the world is right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
A great presentation, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have a couple. I was looking at some of the numbers for the mental health for the year was two thirty-three. And I know we're getting that social worker coming on board. I think you said they're just going to respond to overdoses. Are they also going to be involved with the mental health?
The, the social worker that we're bringing on board is, is a specialty called a certified recovery specialist. So they're specially trained to help people who are experiencing substance abuse as a problem in their life and connect them with, with recovery treatment. There are many people, as I'm sure you know, that have co-occurring mental health and drug issues. But we don't have, have a, a social worker that'll be riding with us specifically for mental health. When we have these calls for service involving individuals who struggle with mental health, we refer all of them to the, the Mobile Crisis Team. And then they follow up and sometimes we'll go with them if they're concerned and sometimes they follow up on their own. But that's a wonderful partnership that we've had for years with Lend A P Valley's Mobile Crisis.
Okay, the second question is, where are you at with expanding the sectors? You were talking about adding another, another sector on with the development back in the mill now. Have you looked into that anymore or?
Yes, I actually have Sergeant Clark, who currently is in an acting lieutenant's position. I have him working on that resource allocation project. That's something I'd like to see us draw out and implement this year, even absent, certainly with that project, I think it's important. But even absent that, I think it will be better served. The community will be better, better served with a different sector plan.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Good evening, chief. How are you?
Well, thank you. Good to see you.
I just want to follow up real quick. I didn't have this written down, but when Mr. Palmer made the point about, about the calls for service for overdoses. And then you were kind of talking about substance abuse. So would there also be calls where it could be alcoholism? Or, you know, someone was called because someone in her house had any, any other issues or are these, are these just going to be responded to drug overdoses?
No, it'll be any call that involves any kind of connection to substance abuse or drug use. I mean, it could be, it could be retail theft arrest, right? Or it could be a check the wellbeing call. It could be anything. And that's, that's kind of the, the thing I think will be unique about our program. They won't just be medical calls. There'll be any kind of call for service with somebody who needs help. And that's why I thought this, this would be an exciting program for us to put a CRS out there to help everybody.
So a good start, you know, obviously, you know, you're extremely data-driven. So, you know, it's a great start to go with the two hundred and thirty-three number. But, you know, as, as we get through twenty twenty-one, we're going to find that, you know, a social worker may have, could have responded to, you know, four hundred calls.
No doubt.
Yeah, okay. Let me see what else I have for you. Oh, I know I did shoot an email. I was just wondering if you could kind of, you know, kind of discuss just briefly here, maybe the timeframes regarding drug buyback and the shredder event. They usually go hand in hand. So could you just mention that for us here for anybody that might be, you know, watching at home and they'll, they'll, they'll have an idea of when that will be? I think it was like, we do maybe one in the spring and on the fall or something. Is that correct?
We do, yeah. And I know that Officer Jaeger already has them scheduled to coincide with the, with the buyback. I know there's going to be one in the spring and one in the fall, but I, I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I can definitely get back to you with them. I know there's going to be one in the spring and one in the fall, but I, I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I can definitely get back to you with them.
Okay, great. Yeah, maybe, you know, just we'll make it over yourself and we'll discuss again next meeting. Just make a note because at that point it might be coming up soon.
Will do.
I wanted to talk about manpower. Do we have anything coming up? Anybody coming up in 2021 for retirement? Are we expecting any retirements?
Well, I mean, we've had some retirements, right? Chief Wilcox retired and Lieutenant Plutnik is retiring this year. And there are other officers on drop. We currently have 25 applications from the last consortium test that we've collected and we'll be going through those to see if any of those candidates kind of meet muster. And then go through the process to see if there are people there that we want to hire. If there are good people there that, that we want to hire, I'll become a new task for it.
Okay. And then I want to really put you on the spot or catch you off guard here, but could you just maybe take a few minutes and, and, and maybe just discuss the, the role transition into, into the new chief's position. I know it's been, you know, maybe five, six months now since, you know, you were acting as of 91 and, you know, maybe just take two or three minutes and discuss that for us.
Sure, sure. You know, it's interesting. I, I would tell myself there wasn't going to be a difference, but, but there is, there has been. And everybody told me that there would be. You know, it, it's kind of a mixed blessing knowing the things that need to be fixed. And, you know, I've really tried to prioritize the training issues and the, and the policy issues that I think are really important. So for me, I've been digging into the policy and training issues for the entire department. And we've kind of taken a page from, from the way the SWAT community does things. They're pretty well organized in analyzing what their capabilities are and then training to those capabilities. And I think that's a really important kind of model that we could use as an entire department. So I have my staff working on with me defining the capabilities that we have or want to have in our patrol and detective divisions. And then define, and then finding training to train to those capabilities and crafting an annual training plan in much the same way I've asked our SWAT team leaders to do for our SWAT team. Because I think we're all going to be out there managing critical incidents. And those are the things that worry me. I watch the same news programs that all of you watch and that our community watches and I, I, I look at the trends that are taking place and I, I spend a lot of time trying to prepare for that next step. Which is why I went down the road of crowd control training and riot batons and shields and we hope that never happens here. But, you know, we came pretty close when Trenton popped off. That could, that could easily have, have, you know, come out here. You know, I had a good conversation with Middletown's chief the other day where we talked about partnering up if there are threats near our borders and kind of pledging to help out one another if we need to surge our staffing levels. We've done that for each other over the last several years, but it was nice to, to have a kind of almost a more formal discussion about it. So for me, the transition, you know, it's made me stay in the building more than I'd like to. You know me, I like to get out there. I really haven't been out there as much as I'd like to be, except coming out to manage one of these critical incidents. But it's exciting to, to prepare everybody for it and it's exciting to, to empower our supervision and focus on them and provide them with training so that they can manage these incidents before somebody like me shows up. It's, it's been fun that way, but stressful.
Yeah. All right, great. Appreciate it. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I kind of just wanted your personal take on, on the transition to, to your new role, but.
Thank you. Now do so anytime. I'm here to be on the spot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we moved 14 up. That takes us to item number 15, which is manager's comment. Mr. Tequila?
I have a few items for you tonight. First one is an escrow release request for MM Metals USA LLC at One My Lane. The amount is $291,691.62 is release number two. Based on Jones Engineering's inspections of the project, the work is completed to their satisfaction and release is recommended.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Tequila regarding the release?
No.
None.
None.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the release of escrow number two?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, please pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
The board is being asked to consider construction release number three for the 2020 Road Improvement Program. The Mill and Overlay of Simons, Gilbert and Elbow, I'm sorry, Elbow and Burgess. The amount of $136,802.88.
Is there any questions from board members?
No.
Rocco, Galloway?
Yeah.
I have none. I'll entertain a motion for the release regarding the road construction.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, please pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
The board is being asked to consider approval of a severance agreement and general release between Falls Township and employee JS with an effective date of January 2021.
Okay, is there any questions from board members regarding the separation agreement?
No.
Entertain a motion to, that we, I guess we accept it or we approve it?
You're, you're approving it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the separation agreement between the township and JS.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Rocco, please pull the board?
Galloway?
Mr. Brasky, did, did you take public comment on that?
I'm sorry. Dave, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Okay, Mr. Rocco, please pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
And the last item. Falls Township Fire Company is currently in the process of obtaining a variance from the zoning hearing board. They are requesting a waiver of the $1,000 filing fee. This is the Falls Township Fire Company.
Is there any questions regarding the filing fee for the waiver? Waiver for a filing fee?
Waiver for the filing, yes.
Okay. No questions. Entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion has been made.
Glad to say.
Mr. Rocco, you can pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tequila. That brings us item number 16, board comment. Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, you know, I hate to do this, but I need to circle back to board appointments. Mr. Dipolito did make me aware that the EAC is meeting on Zoom, so I, I feel like we should probably appoint the two folks that are looking for reappointment, if that's okay. We have Eileen Donahue and John Bence both looking to be reappointed. I believe it's a three-year term and it's a seven-member council. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to appoint two members to the EAC. Can you pull the board, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes. I also would like, again, I apologize. I kind of just class, glanced over this, but Parks and Rec also has someone looking for reappointment and I know they meet as well. And it seems only fair. Rochelle McIntyre is looking to be reappointed for a five-year term. I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Please pull the board?
For Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That's it for board appointments. Thank you for that. No, I mean, you know, this Wednesday is is hopefully not going to be very ventful as far as violence or protests and things like that. So I'm hopeful that everything goes smooth. We wake up Thursday morning, we have a new president and, and things are in a much better place. So Mr. Brasky, excellent job tonight filling in for Mr. Dence. Yeah, and that's it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Mr. Galloway?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Palmer?
No comments.
Okay. I just have, I think, one thing I have, you know, scratched a bunch of notes on my paper here, but I did want to kind of circle back to both of those PowerPoints and, and, you know, job well done to both of the department heads and, and their staff on putting them together. I, I did want to just kind of throw out there maybe an idea where we could upload these to, to both of their, their, I know them guys probably have pages in the dropdown menu on the website. If we can maybe drop something else down for PowerPoints and label a monthly and, and then create links to the, maybe off of Facebook. I think that, I think both PowerPoints are, are, you know, are necessary for the residents to have, to be able to see and, and, you know, maybe they couldn't make the meeting. I know we're going to show it again on YouTube and stuff, but I think if they can just go right to the PowerPoints and take a look at them, I think, you know, to the point I made with, with Mr. Dipolito in the Fire Marshal's Office, you know, we just see the red lights going by us and the same point is for the police department. We see the red and blue lights going by us and to see that there's so much more involved and for the Fire Marshal's Office to see that they're involved in way more than, than just answering, you know, fire calls, non-award calls. But if we can, if we can kind of look at that tomorrow, Mr. Tequila and, and, and see if we can add, you can work with Rose or, or whatever and see if we can start adding this to the website monthly.
I got that done.
Okay, appreciate it. And I know I talked about drug buyback. I know it's, it's only January, but I wanted to make sure we have, you know, give people plenty of notice. And, and a great shredder event. I, I have stuff that I've been meaning to bring to the shredder event for so long and I just think if we just kind of, maybe even for myself, we can, something we can, you know, bring up every month and, and I'll even remember. And that's all I have. So with that, I will, I wish, I wish we were in the public meeting room because I never ran a meeting and I know Bob always had that, the gavel, you know, but with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'm still moved.